I'd like to call the East Brandywine Township Board Supervisors AM meeting this Thursday, November 6, 2025, at 9:00 AM to order. I want to invite everybody, recording device will be used during this meeting. Let's open the meeting, pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as a throne. Rules for conduct of public meetings were established by Resolution 2001-08. Time allocated to each individual making -- excuse me here, I have new glasses and I'm not used to the light. Making comments shall be limited to three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional comment may be granted at discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of -- excuse me, is there any public comments? All right, moving on, minutes of the previous meeting. Want to make a motion to approve?
I'll prove -- I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting of October 16th, 2025.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing there's no old business, we will move to new business. Application for 145-111.
Before we do that, let me just make a motion to approve the dressers.
Oh, I skipped right over that. Okay. You would like to make a motion?
Yes, I'll second.
Any further discussion? I have reviewed them also. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now we can skip old business. New business, application for 345-111, B waiver on waiver 2018 and 2020, Bonsville Road.
We're waiting for our Sunday sun, all the picture here, just five minutes.
Okay, so we'll revisit it.
Where are you for company?
We'll circle back to you.
Thank you.
Appointment of roadmaster, Mr. Rabin.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's my pleasure this morning to report that Derek Koss, who joined the township public works team at about the same time I did, in the summer of 2024, has accepted the township's conditional offer of employment as roadmaster. And did I say, I said 2014, right?
No, you said 2020.
2014, time flies. So at this time, I would recommend that the board appoint Derek as the township roadmaster per the second-class township code.
Any questions, Derek? I'll make a motion to appoint Derek as East Brandywine Township's roadmaster.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Emergency medical service cost-sharing agreement, 2025.
You're gonna have to do some -- sorry. I interrupted you. You recognized me on the agenda item, so my apologies, Mr. Chairman. You have to do a little shuffling in your packet, but included in your packet is the emergency medical services cost-sharing agreement for 2026. The township board entered into a similar agreement for the year 2025. The agreement is not between us and the, our EMS service provider, which was Minquist EMS. The agreement is between us and the other communities that are served by Minquist, namely East Cowan, West Bradford, East Brandywine Township, Cowan Township, and Downingtown Borough. Included in the agreement are expected expenses for the, for EMS service in the coming year. It's into two categories, their operating expenses and their capital expenses. You'll note that the sum of East Brandywine's anticipated obligation is $55,541. A little later in your, your meeting this morning, we will be discussing a draft budget. The amount in that preliminary budget matches this anticipated expense. I would, at this time, respectfully ask the board to commit to our neighboring municipalities what has been calculated as our fair share of the cost of operating EMS service. I will add that fair share means an appropriate proportional contribution relative to our use of the service, which is measured as the percentage of calls. So, the 55,000 I referenced represents just 8% of the total municipal investment in EMS service in the coming year.
I want, I'd like a clarification, Mr. Rabin. On the date of the agreement, it says 2025, but you didn't mention 2026. It is the 2026 again, I think. Or are we finishing up at 2025?
Correct. The portion that is, that is left blank, because all of the municipalities are acting roughly simultaneously to adopt, but the blanks in the first sentence would be more or less today's date, but representing a commitment to each other in the coming year. So, where it says on this blank date of blank, the, it would be sixth day of November, 2025.
So, the agenda is correct when it says a cost-sharing agreement for 2025?
No, that is a typo. It should be 2026. You are correct.
If you look at the fifth whereas paragraph, it's, it's the 2026 operating budget for Minquass.
That's what I saw. Okay.
Fifth paragraph?
Page one, whereas, as it's 2026, which is correct.
Okay, so the document itself is correct throughout.
Yeah.
The agenda is incorrect.
Yeah.
Understood.
The agenda is part of the meeting.
So, the question I have is, there's two illustrations here for call sharing. We have East Brandywine at 8% on this page showing $20,000 with a $5,000 quarterly payment. And then on this page, we have East Brandywine at 8%, $35,541.15. So which, which is our commitment, 20,000 or 35,000?
If I may, paragraph one is the operating expenses. Paragraph three is capital contributions.
Okay.
So, they both apply.
Okay.
And the agreement is such that if they, if Minquass does not spend all the money on capital expenses, they will reimburse the municipalities pro rata in 2027.
Okay.
Both, yes.
Okay, I understand. Thank you, Tom.
All right, we need a motion to approve the emergency medical service call-sharing agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency medical service call-sharing agreement for 2026.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in pay, favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the draft 2026 budget presentation, presented by Mr. Yefto.
What's the -- Strange plans.
Mr. Anthony.
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Matt Anthony. I'm gonna give you the presentation for the draft budget today. Noah, are you driving slides?
Yeah.
All right, great, appreciate it. So, good morning, everyone. I'll try to make this as quickly as possible. Hopefully you have received some materials already. So if you want to go to the next slide, Noah. So, the budget process this year was the same as we've had in previous years. It's a collaborative effort of the members of the committee, staff, Carl sits in on our meetings, plus department heads and committees and third-party organizations like fire and ambulance. So this is something that we spend a lot of time on, usually in the, in the last few months, is, is our busiest time for preparing all this budget. Go to the next slide. I'll try to provide a little bit more of a summary-level information for everyone in the slides this year. I know you will still get the full packet with all of the numbers that you could look at. But the top part of this slide will summarize the funds for which the budget committee spends our time. So we have the general fund, fire services, solid waste, capital, and state liquid fuels fund. And underneath of all of that, you will see the summary of what is in the draft 2026 budget in terms of revenue expenditures and then, you know, the, the net of revenues over expenditures. So, for example, in the general fund, we are projecting 7,864,000 of total revenues with expenditures of 7,543. The difference there allows us to make a projected contribution to the capital reserve of about 321,000. So, that is what's happening with that fund. And then you can see all the other funds there. I will not read through them. You will note some fairly big numbers in the capital reserve column. So for 2026, we are projecting significant expenditures in excess of the inflows for the year, but we do have a positive balance in that capital reserve fund in order to cover those expenditures, and we'll go through that in later detail. So in general, what the budget represents in terms of revenue, at least on the highlights on the bottom part of this exhibit, we are projecting no change to the real estate tax. We do have that growing year-over-year, just as a natural organic growth. We also have no change to the earned income tax. That does also grow naturally with payroll and population, so that is projected to grow. No change in the fire services fee. And then lastly, we do have small increases in the refuse collection fee and the recycling collection, just to cover cost growth within the solid waste fund, because our waste hauler contract does have a year-over-year inflator. So we do need to cover cost growth in the solid waste fund. And then on the operating expense highlights, what is in the draft budget is a 3% cost-of-living increase for administrative personnel. And there is a position that was vacated this year. It is assumed that that will be filled for the entire year next year, so that we have the same number of FTEs in the budget. The police budget does reflect the planned leadership changes, which is also true of public works. So all of that has been finalized in time, that we were able to incorporate that into the draft budget. And then lastly, for public works, we did recommend a 5% wage increase for public works to cover cost of living and a market adjustment, based on the feedback we were provided. So, we will have subsequent slides on the general fund and the capital reserve. I don't intend to circle back to fire, solid waste, or liquid fuels funds in any other detail beyond this slide. So, if you can, if you have any questions now, I'll take them, otherwise we can move on to other slides. All right, seeing none, Noah, move us along. Thank you. So in the general fund, we have a couple of detailed slides for you to review. One is a breakdown of the general fund revenue. And for a little bit more detail this year, we decided to display not only what's in the 2026 budget, but also go back and look at how we performed for 2025. So in the top part of this chart, you will see a column for the 2025 budget by category of revenue, as long as, as well as the 2025 projection of how we view that revenue emerging by the end of the year. Obviously, that is still a projection, the year is not over yet. So in total, we are projecting revenues to exceed budget by $733,000. And you can see that in terms of the categories where that is coming from, it is coming from permits and fees, revenue collection coming in greater than originally anticipated, as well as real estate transfer taxes. Those are the, really the two biggest. And that really is from strong residential housing growth in the township is driving that revenue to be favorable over budget. And we have carried that through. So if you look at the 2026 budget, we have carried through higher revenue for those things as part of our 2026 budget anticipation. So if you're thinking about 2026 risks and opportunities, there's always sort of both associated with a risk and opportunity, whether that housing growth continues at the same level that we are projecting it to continue at. So that can always go either way anytime you're looking at how the 2026 budget might emerge. So, that gives you a little bit more of a flavor of where the revenue is projected to come from for 2026. Any questions on revenue? All right, Noah, thank you. Next slide then is general fund expenditures by category. And create a very high-level summary. We don't always have perfect information in terms of how to group this stuff together, but this generally provides a high level of where the expenses are coming from. And you'll see that we provided the same level of information in terms of 2025 budget relative to 2025 projection. And you'll see we are projecting the year to be $33,000 over our original budget. So, pretty close to expenditures being on budget, which I think, this is my third year on the committee, every year I've observed that the department heads are definitely prudent in terms of their spending, and we've always really seen expenditures come in pretty close to budget. And honestly, in this one, even though it's, presents as slightly unfavorable, the largest driver of unfavorability here is a pension contribution, which is also offset by higher revenue. So, really, if it weren't for that pension contribution variance, we would actually be even closer and maybe we were overall favorable to budget for expenditures. And we are, in that column for 2025 projection, you will see we are projecting that we will have the ability to make a transfer from the general fund to the capital fund at the end of the year. And that is currently only a projection, obviously. And then on the right, you will see the 2026 budget by category. And you will see that there are some categories that are growing faster than others. So first is the general government and other is going up nine and a half percent relative to last year's budget. That is really driven by non-salary cost increases. Certainly, if you look across the things that are driving that, there's a lot of insurance expense, utility expense, and those sorts of things that are trending higher than salaries. It also does reflect a half of an FTE more than the prior year, because we have an assistant township manager that was budgeted for a half-year for 2025 and now is in for a full year for 2026. So it is one-half of an FTE higher than year-over-year. There also is a budget item in there that the committee is recommending for an external compensation analysis, so that we can move away from any ad hoc market analysis. I think this is sort of more best practice among, you know, companies to look at market comp, so that we make sure that the compensation of current positions is fair and equitable. And then on the police, it does show a year-over-year increase. That is largely because of how we are displaying the budget this year compared to other years. So in 2025, we had three capital funds, one for police, one for public works, and then a general township. We have consolidated, they all, consolidated all of those capital funds into one capital fund, and we are no longer showing police vehicles and ballistic vests as a capital expense, because frankly, they have been consistent year-over-year, and with the normal cycle of rotating through those things, they might as well be an operating expense. So we have moved them into the operating budget, so they no longer need to come out of capital, but that is causing at least year-over-year, a higher increase in the police general fund expenditures, because we threw 127,000 of vehicles into their budget. So, I think that covers everything on the expenditures for the general fund. Questions? All right, Noah, thank you. All right, so I think last year you guys were introduced to the committee's analysis to start to look at a five-year capital reserve or capital projection. And so this is the result of spending more time with that. There are a lot of numbers here, so maybe I'll even start on the bottom. So what you'll see on the bottom is our end-of-year capital reserve balance projection. So we are currently projecting at the end of this year that the capital fund will have 2,551,000 of reserve buildup in it. And so, when we looked at that earlier slide of our ability to fund all of the capital requests that have been put into the budget, you'll see that that's our ability is to fund over 700,000 of capital expenditures, is we have two and a half million buildup of the capital reserve. And so we are projecting how will that capital reserve trend over time? You'll see we certainly are projecting it to dip down in 2026, and then maybe slowly grow in future years. And I say maybe because honestly, years four and five out, I don't think we actually know all of the capital expenditures that we are going to need to, to fund in those out-years. For example, you know, we know we need to replace the salt shed out back in 2026. We didn't know that last year. So, things will come up in future years. So it is most definitely prudent that we are a bit, are, we are able to forecast a positive balance, especially in the out-years of that. The other thing I will highlight on this, and you guys can look at it at your leisure, is we are projecting at the top that we will need to continue to budget transfers from the general fund of the capital reserve. So the general fund is always going to need to generate revenues in excess, in excess of the expenditures that we have, so we can continue to fund the capital reserve fund. I went over this one quickly, just because, you know, it's just taking a little bit of time. So, any questions on this? There is, the next slide will detail all of the projects that are in the capital reserve. So, we will have that coming up next. All right, Noah. Two more slides, and then we'll be done. So, all of the capital expenditures that you saw on the previous slide are detailed here. And as I mentioned, in years four and five, which in this case are 2029 and 202030, I'm gonna start with those years, because you will see, we don't actually have much, other than road repaving. So, when I say that it is good news that we have a healthy fund balance on the previous slide, is because quite frankly, we probably don't know all the capital expenditures we are going to need in 2029 and 2030, in 2030. So, that, that is a sort of an obvious graphical representation, that we have a bit of a blank in the out-years. But in 2026, we do have a fairly long list of capital expenditures that are included in the budget, including road paving, Bonsville Mill, and then a couple that I do want to hit briefly. So we do have 125,000 in the budget for the township's contribution towards the all-abilities playground. But that is a very uncertain number at this point, based on everything we evaluated as we went through the budget process, and could be lower depending on the ultimate disposition of grants. But we wanted to, we didn't want to lower the number in the budget yet, until we had clear line of sight into what it needs to be. But we do think there is the opportunity for that expense to the township to be lower than 125,000. And then the other one I wanted to highlight was the Hideaway Stream restoration. The net cost to the township we have of that is 75,000, but that is, as we understand it, a grant-dependent project. That 75,000 is currently only 10% of the total cost of that project, so without the grant, that would be a very cost-prohibitive project. We have 75,000 in the budget, that could be delayed till prior years, or till, till later years, depending on what happens with grants. And then some of the other ones that are on here, the HVAC and the storm drain pipe lining, those were actually in 2025, but just from a practicality standpoint are really gonna happen in 2026. And then, I did mention that last one on there, the salt shed replacement that needs to be done out back. So, everything else on here is, I think, self-explanatory. Any questions on the actual capital projects? All right, Noah, last slide. This was a little bit more on Bonsville Mill. We've presented this slide in prior years. So you saw in the, I'm gonna skip the first two, because those were just operating expenses, but the third bullet on here, the capital building rehab, you'll see what's, you saw, I think you saw what was in the capital expenditures was 25,000. That was for completing Building C exterior work, and we also put funds in there for moving fencing on the south side and the north side of Building B for, so on the south side, that would be to allow ramp access, and on the north side was just for safety, was the thinking of the committee. Because if you look at the very bottom section of this slide, you will see that what is excluded from the 2026 budget is masonry work on Building B. And this is something that Luke looked into for this year and did receive some quotes, and I don't actually know the amount of the quotes, but it was a fairly significant expenditure in order to complete masonry work to stabilize those walls that remained from Building B. So the budget committee has not included in the draft budget, and has not recommended that that work be done. So that is why we have the project in there for the fencing, since we're not saying that the Building B walls would be, would be touched. There also was a request by the committee, the Bonsville Mill Committee, to do interior display cabinets in Building A, which we did not include in this version of the budget. So that is everything. I think, Noah, there's just one last slide that probably says questions.
I, I don't have a question as much as just a thank you to the committee. Few years back, two of the supervisors ended this program, and it was the biggest mistake this township ever had. And I think everybody, just seeing this today, the amount of effort that you guys have put in, volunteering time, residents volunteering their time for this committee is incredible. You guys make the supervisors look good by the hard work that you guys do behind the scenes, and the fact that we don't have tax increases year after year. So I wanted to amend, commend you guys for that, as well as I just think the residents need to realize, how many hours can you, just off the top of your head, have you guys invested in this project for the committee?
I think just in October, we did four or five meetings that were three-hour each.
Meeting weekly since September.
And that was just for face-to-face time. I think as you see from slides and Excel files, we also spend time outside of meeting time.
It's to be commended, and again, thank you so much for all the effort and time that you guys put in, and you just made this presentation look like it was the easiest thing in the world to talk about, when you're talking about millions and millions of dollars. So, thank you.
I agree with Kyle 100%. It's amazing job you guys have done.
I agree also. Kyle took all the thunder here. I think it's important that residents know that not all the committees here, and I was trying to come up with the hours, it's hundreds of hours, just from September and October to this meet, meet, meeting. We actually have people that have applied, we have new members. I think there's gonna be another one pointed in January. They all have excellent backgrounds, and me with a financial background and being the supervisor liaison, I, I am blown away and amazed, amazed at their abilities. There's other projects that they've done during the year, that they've reviewed our cost of permitting versus our fees we've charged. I know they got a couple planned here for 2026. So in the early parts of the year, they're studying So in the early parts of the year, they're studying business practices and costs versus revenues, so at least we break even when we're serving the public there. So thank you very much, and I appreciate the other members who came.
Thank you all so very much for the hard work, and a great job. Great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I summarize next steps on the budget process?
Yes.
All right. So today is the first meeting in November of the Board of Supervisors. The second-class Township Code says that a township must advertise for a public comment, a draft budget, and later, before the end of the year, adopt a final budget. The proposed timeline is that at your second meeting in November, the board, after having time to digest the material in front of you and the presentation today, would make a recommendation to advertise the budget. So that's two weeks from today. At your AM meeting in December, there would be a few resolutions in front of you. One would establish the fees for 2026, and the other would make a transfer from the operating to the capital funds, which represent the success of conservative budgeting practices, and to fund the capital reserve. And then at your second meeting in December, you would adopt a final budget. So that's, there will be budget-related agenda items on all three of the remaining Board of Supervisors' meetings in this calendar year.
Okay, Mr. Revan, you're still up. Financial security release granted by Walk Phase 3. Before you give, start, my handout that I reviewed last night on the Far Right Com doesn't have all the numbers in them. I find it difficult to vote unless I know what some of, how much is remaining to be See that? How it got cut off? Because we don't have $6 left. Is there any way to get a?
Here's your full sheet. Cut it. I think that's.
Oh, it is. It's an all of ours.
Yeah, it's an all of ours.
Oh, is it cut off?
Yes.
Oh, I see.
It is probably an unfortunate time to mention, we have a brand-new, multi-purpose printer, and it seems like the setting shrink to fit is not the default setting. So yes, you are correct, the table is cropped.
I just can't see the detail.
So this can, this item can get pushed in the next meeting?
Just list these items, they come to that number.
Perhaps. I'm actually going to punt the question to the solicitor for a moment. The packet materials include a letter from the township engineer, and stapled to that is a table itemizing the things for which financial security has been collected, and itemizing which items for which the financial security is being released. The reason I'd like to consult with the attorney is because the municipality's planning code does describe a deadline between when a developer asks for the escrow release and when the board must act. So before I answer the question, can we table this for a new print, are we in trouble with the MPC, Mr. Solicitor?
The municipality's planning code requires us to release amounts after the township engineer certifies that the work has been completed. And this cover letter includes that certification, where it says, "Work has been completed in the amount of 750,000, $519.21." So this is a little different, because what has happened here is that the developer has started in the Phase 3 without yet posting the financial security, which they are permitted to do. They have to get the plan recorded before they convey any lots. So basically, once the engineer certifies that the numbers are correct, the board is obligated to authorize the release, or it's deemed approved. And I think that the timeframe in the MPC will expire before your next meeting.
Why don't we do this? Why don't, if you can look that up and get a copy of that for us to review at the table here, we can do that, and then we can jump to the application that was postponed while we're waiting for that.
Yeah, that's okay.
Certainly. I just, FYI, I do have the table in front of me now that got cropped in the printout.
The problem is.
No, your verbal, your verbal putting it on record is good enough for me, if you have the complete printout from the engineer.
Sure, we do.
Okay, so how much is?
So the native format of this file looks like it's legal size, and it was printed on eight and a half by 11. It looks like the printer setting was not set to shrink to fit, therefore, the edges got cropped off.
So what is the remaining today?
If you can even see that, that's.
I can't, these need less. Well, you've got to go to the end. I want to see the toll.
Right, you've got to scroll down.
All the way to the end of the report.
So it's 753, this one's remaining.
Yep.
Total requested reduction.
But just for purposes of explanation, the amount that you see in yellow, with the yellow highlighting, that work has already been done. It just so happens, it's close to the amount that's remaining. So they did not post financial security for 753,440.36. But there will still remain, after this release, 753,854.86.
Well, that was my question, so I'll propose a motion to approve the financial security release of granted by Walk Phase 3 in the amount of 753,319.25. I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I didn't mean to be a, hold things up there, but I, it's important, I keep track of what's remaining.
You had to have on record what was left in your account.
Yes. Thank you.
I think we're learning a valuable lesson as administrative team. When we queue up the agenda and attach attachments, we sort of like, okay, done, and then we hit print, and we're not looking at what actually the machine spits out, which we should spend a little more time doing. All right, my apologies for the inconvenience.
That's right. I was going to call you at 10:30 last night, but I decided not to. All right, we're going to circle back to the application for the 345-111, B waiver for 2018 and 2020 Bondsville Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Constantine Condon, on behalf of the applicant or members, thank you for your time. Thank you for the courtesy as well, with our place in the agenda. Mr. Chairman, I know you have a long agenda, so I'm going to try to summarize our request. As the request sets forth, your ordinance allows for waivers. And obviously, you probably deal with waivers all the time from developers for large projects. But your stormwater ordinance includes a specific waiver ability for the stormwater statute, and we are asking for a waiver. And what we're specifically asking for, I want to summarize what we're asking you to do, and then the why we feel as if we fall within the permissible basis for that waiver under your waiver statute. What we're asking for is merely a waiver of the access lane coming in from Bondsville Road, until it bends and starts heading back up to the home at the rear lot. And I'd like to show you, and our application warrants some explanation. Just looking at the plans may not just, may not be clear exactly what we're asking for. I don't know if you have hard copies in front of you, or if we can go to one of our exhibits. Exhibit number one, submitted after this application was submitted back in September. I could put it underneath the projector, is that right? Is that fine? The board, what you have in front of you here is what we're proposing to do without including the access lane in the stormwater calculations. So our request for a waiver, and the only thing we're asking for, we're not asking you to approve this stormwater plan. That will still be reviewed by your engineers. But what we're asking you to do, and that's well within your purview and only your purview, is whether or not a waiver is justified, and we'll explain why it is. What we're asking for is, this access lane, only 10 feet of it, it'll be 10 feet wide and pervious, and because we're proposing as an additional stormwater facility to help, frankly, slow and stop the flow of water, we are going to build this access lane up. Only 10 feet of it will be pervious, at the top, obviously, if you're driving along, but it'll have a cross-section of 12 feet, in order for it to be, obviously, raised several inches. We plan on it being, the cross-section shows it now, eight inches of stone base, and then two inches of pavement, so it'll be eight inches raised. The reason we're doing that is then this entire access lane will serve as a berm and create, as your stormwater engineer recommended during our first meeting with them in person back in June, Eve Tyson's recommended creating a bioswell along the edge, the upper edge of our access lane. By raising the access lane, it will serve that purpose, and slow the flow of water going beneath our property. So the waiver, again, just to be clear, the waiver request would be for a 12-foot section along the center line of what's shown on this plan, only 10 feet of it being pervious. And that's the extent of the waiver. The basis for the waiver.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yeah, we'd certainly like to answer the questions that the board has.
Only for purposes of clarification. When I reviewed this application, I saw something about a waiver for the driveway, and I thought it said, "Up to the first water bar."
Correct.
Where is that?
That is here. So the access lane, this is Bondsville Road here, and the two lots that we're talking about, this lot here is, address is 2020, it's completely landlocked. And then the flag lot, the pole of the flag lot comes here, and that first water bar is here. We are managing everything above that water bar here, and we are not asking for a waiver of the driveway coming up here to the home on 2020.
Well, and the reason I ask, because if you look at one of your post-drainage plans, the one that's rendered in color.
Yes.
There's a, there's a something labeled water bar, which is on, I don't, you don't have the lot's number, but it's on the lot, which is closer to Bondsville Road.
Yes.
So you're not, you're not talking about stopping there.
No.
You're talking about not managing the stormwater for the entire 10-foot-wide impervious surface, to the point you indicated.
Well, I don't like wording it as, "We're not managing it," because we believe that by raising the access lane, that will manage a significant portion of that water, in addition to the seepage pits that we're, we will be putting in for the homes. But you're correct, this plan, the color plan, exhibit six and seven are submissions, and I have hard copies for the board, if they would like to take that home.
We have them in front.
Okay, all of, hopefully you have all of those submissions as well. But this is, this shows what our engineer has done an analysis of, and exhibit seven shows you even more detail as to how he comes to these conclusions, the flow of water that's occurring on this property. But this is showing you in color, essentially, what we are asking not to do, because it would be such a hard burden on us. So yes, the level bar, the water bar that we're referring to to go up to for a waiver is back here, that we're managing.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Yes, so that to clarify, so this plan is essentially what we're doing with the inclusion of building off the access lane, as well as including, we will, from this plan, we think that the seepage pit here at the entrance of Bondsville Road, we feel as if that will serve water management better, and not create a detriment to our neighbors below us. Because this seepage pit here is at the lowest point, essentially, of the farm, will catch most of the water, and when it overflows during a significant event, it will not discharge onto our neighbors. It will discharge to a pen-dot storm drain, which is just south of our driveway there, approximately, less than 100 feet away. So that's one of the bases for the waiver. The waiver statute specifically says that if the property has peculiar conditions that would impose an undue hardship on the applicant if the stormwater ordinance is strictly adhered to. And we believe that this property was made for that statute. That's the reason your waiver is in there. For properties like this, which are obviously very unique, this property, our engineer has provided a certification, and that certification summarizes what those peculiar conditions of our property are. The first and foremost, and the reason we purchased this property, is you can see our families here. My wife and I are building the home on the, if you will, the rear lot that's closer to the golf course. That'll be our home. Our son, and his wife and their new baby, will be in the home in the lot that's landlocked. But the conditions that warrant this waiver are that the premises is within your agriculture security area. It's one of the few lots in the township, and we have every intention, the reason we purchased this is not to have a 10-acre lawn. We intend, Mr. Gil Weaver has been farming this, he's been harvesting the hay on this property twice a year, every year, for over 20 years, has, since the two years we've owned the lot, and we have every intention of continuing that, and continuing to farm the property. So the impacts aren't just, you know, put a seepage pit in your lawn, what's the big deal? We're losing valuable farmland with the seepage pits that we already have. The other conditions are, considerable portion of the lot is sloped. And as you can see from the drawing, which isn't clear unless you actually pay attention to the slopes, this is essentially a bowl. A lot of it's coming down to the pond, which is another unique condition on this property. The other uniqueness is the fact that this access lane runs along the lowest part of the slopes that are coming down. We're also managing a significant portion of water above us that's on Apple Cross, none of which is managed today. So this property has no water management currently. A significant portion of water, exhibit seven will show you that, comes across Ms. Levinson's property. She's here, she's our neighbor, she's here in support. We let them, we advised, we have several witnesses, only if the board had questions, but we advised them that they wouldn't have to be here today, but they were all willing to be here. Mr. Weaver, the farmer who's farming, was going to be here today. Mark Palladino was going to be here today as well, to testify as well. But they're all in support of this. But that uniqueness, what's happening on this property from a water flow basis, which isn't evident from the plan itself without this explanation, is you have a sheet flow of water that's coming down naturally along this farm. It's 10 acres. What the ordinance would require us to do, because that water is hitting almost the borderline of the property, a 10-foot-wide pervious area, the code is requiring us to catch it, and that's what this plan is showing, the colored plan. It's requiring us to catch all that water, and the only way of possibly doing it is drastically increasing the seepage pits that we have currently in this area, more, well more than doubling them. We're proposing them to be two feet deep, they're now going to be almost four and five feet deep respectfully. And then along the access lane, it's unnaturally trying to concentrate all the water that's coming down the hill at three different points along the access road, which we submit is the opposite effect of what the stormwater ordinance wants, because you're now concentrating that collection of water closer to the border, and when those systems overflow, you now will have concentrated areas of flow onto our neighborhood below us, as opposed to spreading that out along what is almost exactly a quarter of a mile of length, and trying to take that water and concentrate it unnaturally, almost taking it, trying to take it uphill, if you will. I mean, it literally is going uphill. These levelers, overflow levelers, are uphill, this seepage pit would be uphill, the same thing with this seepage pit here under the road. Not to mention the fact that putting it under a road would require us to tear up that road in order to maintain those seepage pits, in accordance with the township's easement rights for maintaining those seepage pits. So these areas are, is why, and that's the basis for why we're asking not to be required to do that. We feel that building up the access lane, as I stated, would create a berm the entire length of the farm lane, that the seepage pits that we have, that we are proposing, will do a sufficient job catching everything above these seepage pits here. And to put it to perspective what the code is requiring, although these look like just small colored boxes on a large area, these seepage pit increases would be two football fields long. more than two football fields long, approximately 20 feet wide and four feet deep of stone. That would cover a significant portion of this farm, and it's over 4,000 tons of stone alone. That's over $150,000 in stone. Now, cost alone cannot be considered the hardship, and we're not asking that. The hardship is the uniqueness of the property, the fact that it's a farm, the fact that it will continue to be farmed, the fact that it's so steeply sloped, and the fact that the only access, this subdivision was approved by the township in '77, I believe. And this was the access for these two lots, the one being landlocked and obviously the lot in the rear. Without that access, there's nowhere else to gain access. And we respectfully submit that the cutout along Bonsville Road has been there at least since the '70s, if not well beyond that. And that's what we're using, which was essentially approved by the township when this was subdivided. So that is the basis for the request. I don't know if the board has any specific questions.
But we- I'm sorry.
Pardon me. No, no problem.
If the board doesn't have any questions, I understand the applicant has met with Cedarville a couple times, but we don't have any-
Right.
Well, that was one of the things I was going to bring up. I do have a couple of questions, and that was one of them. I mean, we have our review from our engineer.
We do not.
And then the other question.
Are we going to-
And I understand that the uniqueness of the property, and I understand how intrusive stormwater management can be on a property like this. It becomes ugly and cumbersome, and it takes away from the property.
Exactly.
And I completely concur with that. And a unique approach is definitely the way to go. The only question that then comes into my mind from an engineering standpoint is if you raise that driveway 12 inches, I believe you said.
The base is showing now six feet of stone, no, eight inches. Six feet of stone with another two feet of blacktop eventually. We're not paving it now, but that will be the eventual height, so eight inches.
In the section, I guess the section west of the pond area.
Yes.
Where you're going to be capturing that water, that is going to be raised essentially to capture that water.
Exactly.
So when you get some, you know, severe storms or flow rates, will it undermine that drive and lift it and take it away? And, you know, we all understand when water gets under blacktop, it goes. So as long as our engineer can concur with that method or that approach, you know, I think we can kind of take a better look at this and understand it a little better.
In fact, it was Eve Tyson's recommendation to create a swell, a bioswell along that drive. Obviously, it would have to be designed-
You may have to put clay in the front. You may have to do something that's going to prevent the penetration of the water under that driveway.
We can, another fact that we would ask the board to consider is the access lane is there now. It's stone now, has been since June. And we've had severe storms over the summer, as I'm sure all of you know, significant storms this past summer. And there have been no issues. It has not been washed out, and it's currently at great. There's only maybe two to three inches of stone.
And you're referring to the section down by Bonsville?
I'm sorry?
No, he's talking about the whole lane.
Oh, the whole lane.
The entire lane, the entire lane has been stoned up to this point. It's been there since June when my son and I personally put it down with an operator.
And that's fine.
And it hasn't washed out.
It has been a dry season, we are, flow, but regardless of that, let's get our information from our engineer, see what his input is, because we haven't received any of that.
I understand, and they've looked at this, but, and we've met several times, and that was their recommendation, but you're correct, they haven't formally commented on it yet.
Okay.
If the board wants us back to explain anything once we have that as well, we're more than happy to do it.
I understand the approach, and it makes sense. Stormwater facilities can be ugly and take away from the property's beauty.
It would, yeah, to be perfectly frank, it would make this project impossible for us. I mean, as I stated, the stone alone, the cost of that stone, not to mention the impact, I think the negative impact it will have on our neighbors to the south of us. It doesn't serve their purposes.
The construction process of stormwater with the trucks and the fuel.
Oh, yeah, hauling out the-
The green side of what takes place with regards to stormwater, people have no idea what the impact it has on the environment put these facilities in. So the less is always is more.
And that's our approach as well. Board, I don't want to take up any more time unless the board has any specific questions. I think we've hit the highlights, and I know you have a long agenda.
May I just, for absolute clarity, describe next steps? This sheet, this particular drainage plan will be submitted to Cedarville, the township's stormwater engineer, for feedback. At a minimum, the output with a presumed denial letter would itemize all the areas for which relief is required from the board of supervisors? And then we would, you would return to the board with that in hand?
Well, the denial letter will be coming from your engineer, I'm assuming you said?
Right.
And then you'd be expecting a response to us?
Well, no, I'm just saying, so we've all agreed, next step, let's submit this for feedback from Cedarville.
Yes.
Then what? Are you back on the agenda?
Well, then I think the board either can bring us back or they vote on this waiver request, decide on this waiver request. I mean, that's what we're respectfully asking for, is for them.
I just, I don't want this to fade away to nothing. I don't want to send some next steps.
Thank you. So, and it may be prudent to submit to Cedarville exactly what waiver is your request.
We will, absolutely.
The way I read your application, it appeared to me you're saying waive the entire stormwater management ordinance, and I'm not saying that to be confrontational for this portion of the driveway.
Right. Well, we are asking that it be withdrawn from the calculation of what we need to do otherwise on the property. We are doing a significant amount of stormwater without that farmland. That's what we're asking for, but we will, I'll put those specific parameters in there. And we will put, obviously, a specific longitude and latitude as to where it will go up to, but it's essentially up to this water bar here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to, we're going to move on to, and that's it. We're going to move on to public comment, there is no subdivision or zoning applications. There's no ordinance or resolutions for consideration. Public comment on non-agenda items, do we have any? Yes, Sandy?
Please stop.
Yes, you are, you put your hand up, come on. Come up to the podium here and tell us what you have on your mind. For the audience, let's let everyone know who you are. We know you well.
How do we get the whole thing on air?
Pick up the whole camera, it's on the swivel.
So my name's Beth Watts, I'm here to support Sandy Moser, and we just have a few comments about Bonsville Mill.
It's all good. We've had one heck of a year at the mill. Starting in January, my hardcore group of volunteers put down three inches of leaf mold over that entire garden, followed by five inches of mulch. And they didn't leave us, they stayed, you know, they kept on going. We kept planting, and everybody was going along fine. We've had some really great publicity this year. We were featured in two different regional magazines. The first one was in May when the mainline Today came out and ran a two and a half page article on the Bonsville Mill garden, on the culvert clearing garden, that is. Now, this is a very, very good day for us to be here since the budget was presented. And I want to remind everyone that there were no plants on that budget. Ever since we started the culvert garden, all of the plants and for the whole property has all been covered with grants that we received or donations from the public. Now, in March, we received the second $1,500 grant from the Chester County Beekeepers. That money has been, is being used to purchase pollinator plants for the, what we're now calling the bird raised up near the top of the gardens. And within another two or three weeks, we should receive a check for $7,545, the first of two $7,545 checks from AXA Excel Corporation. They approved the grants that I had written, and there's just been a little bit of delay. The paperwork has been tied up, but nonetheless, the last paperwork is due here in another week, and so I expect that check for, by the first of December. That money will be used to replace any trees that we have lost. It'll also be used to fill out some of the areas where we want to keep covering the ground so that there is no future maintenance on the property in the areas that we're planting. Now that the gardens is manageable, the gardens are looking forward to having nature programs in 2026. We have a number scheduled, mostly on bugs and water frogs and so forth and so on. Our first program is on January 16th. It's going to be an owl program, it's going to start at 6 o'clock at night. People will have to be registered to come in because it is after hours at the park. And we're really looking forward to that. I want to share this article. I mean, this is just fantastic that we have this, so you're each going to get your very own copies to take home with you. And I've asked Beth to come and talk to you about all of the positive things that we hear at the mill. I mean, it's a continual stream of, this is gorgeous.
So first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the supervisors for all of the support that we have had and felt from the supervisor board. As in running with some of the other presentations, like during the budget meeting, we have been very cautious and careful to work within our budget as well. And we appreciate everything that has gone into the support of the mill itself. We know there have been some costs with regard to some of the infrastructure there and things like that. Sandy and I are here to represent everything else that the gardens represent at the mill, including the whole property and the park as a whole. So we're all familiar with, you know, the 47 acres and the two miles of trails. We get people that come in all the time, and what we want to share with you now is that with all of this publicity, this only being one of them and being the first of many more that we anticipate to come, we are starting to see visitors from not just our local Chester County area. We're seeing visitors come from as far away as Bucks County and Maryland and Delaware and New Jersey, New York even, Michigan, Wisconsin. We're starting to see people generate interest based on some of this publication that's coming out. We anticipate further publications coming out in the future, and we also anticipate being included in the Philadelphia area gardens and arboretum booklet that's handed out through the Philadelphia area. So once that happens, anyone that comes into the Philadelphia area will see Bonsville Mill Park as another garden and arboretum that they can come and visit when they're in the area. Every time we see people come in for special horticultural events in the Philadelphia area through our contacts, and our contacts are getting farther and wider in our local region, we're having people that are specifically coming out, and they've heard about us through the horticultural societies. So I want to let you know that, we're really sort of at the brink of a lot of further opportunities. And with those opportunities, we're welcoming donations and things like that to further give us other opportunities to work with. We know that this has been a challenging park through the development. We knew that the first three years of the garden development were going to be very difficult. We find ourselves now in three years and finding that it has filled in beautifully, and we're getting the recognition now that we were really hoping would happen. It's here. And so anyway, we wanted to share with you these good things. We're getting a lot of positive comments from people, so we want you to know that there is a huge positive side to what's already happened and what we see coming out in the future. So thank you.
Very nice, thank you so much.
We had a tour from Wisconsin coming through.
Nice.
And people from Scotland.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated. Yes. Good morning.
Good morning, Jim.
Good morning. First, I want to congratulate Sandy and her gardeners for all of the hard work that they've done to create what is a fantastic garden that is generating all this attention for the park. They've done a fantastic job, and she's done a fantastic job in finding grants and donations to fund the plants since we completed the installation of the project. I just want to remind everybody that this was really a broad committee-wide program that started back in 2019 with grant applications. And we got grants from the state and the county to fund, as well as substantial support from the township to fund the installation of this garden. And the volunteers that did a significant amount of the construction work to install the pathways and the infrastructure for the gardens. So it was a broad project, committee-wide, that created this garden. And the amount of effort, which has been huge by Sandy and her gardening crew, has created something that is truly fantastic, that draws attention to the park. And hopefully, that attention bleeds over into some additional support for the buildings as well as financial support for the gardens themselves. So I just wanted to remind you all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I noted, I noticed, yeah, notices. There was an executive session held on October 29th to discuss personnel matters. There'll also be a pension meeting following this session after adjournment, and then we will do the conditional use hearing. Is that right?
Yep. Additional use hearing for the client group at 8:30 horseshoe light.
So is there a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.